Good evening. Planning zoning commission for the city of Granbury will now come under to order on Monday, November the 18th at 6:00 PM, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. The first item on the agenda tonight are public comments on agenda items that are non-public hearing items, and we do not, I don't, do we have anybody that would like to speak on anything like that? Because I don't think we have anything tonight along those lines. If not, we'll move on to item C, our consent agenda, approval of the regular minute meetings from October the 21st, 2024. Do I have any changes, revisions, or additions? If not, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Chair, move to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Moore. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D1, a public hearing, consider the request of Brady Pendleton for specific use permit to allow for office, professional, general, and residential 7,000 single-family residential zoning. The property is located at 605 West Doyle Street. Cody?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commission. This property is located at 605 West Doyle. It's .27 acres, and it is a portion of Lot 2 and 4 of the Thrash addition, and the purpose for tonight is SUP for office, professional, general use under the R7 zoning. And as you see, the zoning is R7, butts light commercial on one side and residential on the other side. And this is the proposed site plan for the property. He's not proposing to change anything on the site, or really, anything inside, just house one office for a law firm for when he's here at court in Hood County. And the conditions for the SUP, a one-year timeframe or time limit, and for office, professional, general, defined by the zoning ordinance. The floor plan shown as Exhibit A is the governing floor plan for the property. And condition for the space in the building may be used for office, professional, general, and the bedroom identified as nine by six by fourteen and a half, as noted, and this is the only room designated as an office. Prior to the certificate of occupancy for proposed office use, the governing floor plan shall be amended to accurately dimension the existing hard surface driveway depth and width. And all parking maneuvering displays must be on improved hard surfaces. And for specific use permits, the PNC considers if it use generally conforms to the comprehensive plan, the city's objectives, and contains the requirements and safeguards to protect And the zoning ordinance SUP regulations. On November 7th, city staff mailed out 23 public notices to all property owners within 200 feet on the municipal tax roll and within 200 feet of the subject property. Notice was placed on November 2nd, and the Hood County newspaper is required by law, and at this time, we have zero letters in favor or against. And staff recommends approval of the SUP. And the voting options for tonight recommend approval of the SUP as presented, recommend approval of the SUP with additional conditions, and recommend denial of the SUP.
Thank you, Cody. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Yes.
There's a red button if you hit that, Mr. Page.
Good evening. I'd be more than happy to address any questions you have. As Cody mentioned, of course, this is primarily just a secondary type office, mainly our office in Stephenville, also have offices in Eastland. I had an office in Glen Rose for about 12 years, that this is transitioning from Glen Rose to here. I find myself in Hood County almost on a weekly basis. So, that's really the location, obviously. That's the purpose of the use. If you're asking about the rest of the property, I'll tell you, it's probably going to be a secondary type home for my family to come over and enjoy the city with. That's really about it. But I anticipate being there one to three days for small portions of the day there. It won't ever be a primary type office. It's simply just a place to meet people. So, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'll open the public hearing. Do you have any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We do have one speaker who has signed up to speak tonight, John Taylor. Tyler?
Taylor.
Taylor. You'll please state your name and your address, please, sir.
My name is John Taylor. I live at 603 West Doyle in Granbury, so I'm the adjacent property. So, he's answered most of the questions that we didn't know ahead of time, but I just want to reiterate a couple of points. We've lived in that location for 40 years, four zero, so we've been there a long time. And over the years, we've seen the neighborhood migrate from a family residence neighborhood to a neighborhood that is not really as many families there. There's a lot of Airbnbs and now an office. And I don't really have a problem with the setup he has, but I just want to reiterate that. It's disturbing to me that over time, the whole neighborhood seems to be moving in that direction. Specific concerns I would have, and I think he addressed, is that parking, obviously, that's not going to be an issue, and also maintaining that property in the historic district. The edge of the historic districts is on the other side of the house from where we are, and so it's in the historic district, and there are rules on what you can do with the property, what it looks like and that sort of thing, and making sure that it stays in the historic district, because that's important to us for the property and important to the city to maintain that. And then finally, if they do do some paving, there is an issue that could be from runoff, some of our neighbors down on Hannaford. When it rains, they have pooling. We don't have as much, because we put a French drain in years ago. But if they do try to, if it does get some parking and paving, then there'll be an issue with drains as you go in the future. So, I want to make sure that none of that stuff happens. It sounds like it's not going to, but I just want to make sure that that's noted for the record going forward.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Commission members, any questions for staff? Or any other questions if we need to bring the applicant back?
I do, yes.
To the applicant? To bring the applicant back? Would you please come back to the podium? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is your proposed house, is this, is it included in the historical district?
I believe it is.
Okay. And we know the next door neighbors has been designated as a historical house. Is that right?
No.
That I can't answer. I don't know. Sounds like maybe John can.
Okay, thank you. My next question will be for Cody. Could you go back to the additional conditions? I'd like to see number five. Okay, maybe it was, go to the next page. There we go. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Commission members? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request.
Chair, I'll move to approve the SUP as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the SUP as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Class seconds it. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. Next item on the agenda is D2, a public hearing, consider the request of Greg Shaw for specific use permit to allow for dwelling, single-family, attached townhomes in the central business district zoning. The property is located at 210 Yule Street. Cody?
Yes, ma'am. So, this is located at 210 Yule Street. It's .55 acres and is going to have six residential units on it. It is zoned commercial business district, which would allow with the SUP to have townhomes like this. There is a preliminary plat that has been submitted, and the purpose is to develop residential townhomes. On November 7th, city staff mailed out 10 public notices to all property owners within 200 feet on the municipal tax roll, within 200 feet of the subject property. Notice was also published in the Hood County newspaper on November 2nd. At this time, we've had zero letters in favor and one later in opposition. And staff recommends approval of the SUP. And the voting options for tonight recommend approval of the SUP as presented, recommend approval of the SUP with additional conditions, or recommend denial of the SUP.
Thank you, Cody. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Greg Shaw. I'm the general contractor developer. Also have representative of the engineering firm, if you have any technical questions for him. So, the project's pretty self-explanatory. We're excited about the process here, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Open the public hearing. Any questions, Commission members, for the applicant or the city staff?
No, well.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, I was noticing the setbacks on these. 11.3 foot on the front and six foot on the back and five foot on the side. Y'all are squeezing this in there.
Yes, sir. It's a very level lot, backs up to the railroad track. We're going to have an engineered wall along that back area separating between the railroad tracks and the property. The idea with these townhomes, and this is not the first time we've done this, the idea of the townhomes is for primarily empty nesters or single people that really don't want to do a lot of yard work. They want to, you know, come home from work and go downtown. They're able to get together and with the agreements that we have for a townhome, have somebody do the maintenance on the yard. So, we'll install a sprinkler system, fully landscaped, you know, and the one with the project we just finished in Weatherford turned out really well, exactly to the target people that we were marketing this to, and they sold rather quickly. This won't be a rental property. This will be individually owned, no absentee owners. So, it will be for, I used to say older people. Now, I say people like me, you know. So, but that's primarily our target market on that. People that want to, and have a nice place to live, but want to have the amenities that Granbury offers, and the downtown, and the parks, and things like that.
Okay. How tall a wall are y'all proposing to put behind there, and will it be a sound wall for that train?
Yes, sir. It'll be, it'll be engineered wall. We've got the engineering and had it approved through the community development. It will be a six-foot tall wall, or is it six foot or eight foot?
It's currently showing it's eight foot.
Eight foot, I'm sorry.
Okay, and these are two-story units, I assume?
Single story.
Single story.
The facade on the front is just for show. They're single story. They're not handicap accessible, but they will be very, very user accessible with wide doors and very, very user friendly for people.
Okay, thank you.
I got more question for you, sir. Mr. Shaw? I think Mr. Watson has a question for you. Please.
Sorry, I was in hurry.
That's okay.
You're good. A quick question. Are these going to be one- or two-car garages?
Two-car garage.
Two-car garage?
Yes, sir.
And what's the approximate square footage of each unit?
About 1,600 square feet.
1,600, okay. Thank you.
Two-bedroom, two-bath. So, we took the third bedroom out. Just, this is not for family-type, you know, living. It's more for people that can use that second bedroom as an office, a flexible type room. But it is only two bedrooms, so that we can get more openness in the plan.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or applicant? If not, thank you, sir. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve as presented by Mr. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hayes. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D3, consider the request of Robert Horton to, one, amend the future land use plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan, and, two, change zoning from interim holding to heavy commercial and from interim holding to light commercial, and, three, for a specific use permit for outdoor display daily in heavy commercial zoning. Property is located at 3,700 FM4. Cody?
Yes, ma'am. So, this is located at 3,700 FM4. It's 10.323 acres, and it's currently zoned IH interim holding. There is a preliminary plat submitted for this project, and the development is for tractor supply and smaller retail commercial pad sites to be built at a later date. I've got a slide in here in a second that we will see that breaks it out for what's going to be proposed as light commercial and what's going to be proposed for heavy commercial, so that it kind of makes a little more sense. So, in the 2016 comprehensive plan, it identified the area as retail office. However, in the paragraph describing the commercial areas, FM4 was identified as having pockets of commercial along the corridor, and the proposed is for commercial to allow for the heavy commercial zoning district for the tractor supply lot. And here's a breakdown of the comprehensive plan. And if you look at the three lines above the last sentence in the last paragraph, it identifies where FM4 could have those pockets in there. So, here's the proposed zoning. The pinkish color is where the tractor supply is going to be. That's their tractor supply lot where the SUP will be contained. And then these four separate lots are where the light commercial is going to be. And here is the proposed site plan for the tractor supply. And for the SUP, the conditions for the SUP for outdoor display daily allows for any kind of change that's not within the outdoor display hours of seven to seven. It gives that opportunity for a continuous outdoor display with the SUP. So, this specific use permit is for outdoor display daily, as defined by the regulated zoning ordinance. On October 10th, city staff mailed out 13 public notices to the property owners within 200 feet on the municipal tax roll and 200 feet of the subject property. Notice was also published in the Hood County newspaper on October 5th, as required by state law. And the zoning ordinance, as of now, we have zero letters in favor or against. And staff recommends approval of the future land use amendment, the zoning change, and the specific use permit. And I've got this broken out into three different slides for the voting options, so that it makes a little more sense and is clear for y'all. The future land use, recommend approval of the future land use amendment, or recommend denial of the future land use amendment. Recommend approval of the zoning change, or recommend denial of the zoning change. And for the SUP, recommend approval of the SUP as presented, or recommend approval with additional conditions, or recommend denial of the SUP.
All right, thank you, Cody. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Brayden Horton. I'm one of the owners of this property. We've done this coming up on four years now. We were also the developers of the storage facility next door. We were approached by a tractor supply developer a few months ago about them coming and purchasing a few acres here for their development. As mentioned, we do have a preliminary plat submitted. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Questions, Commission members? Mr. Moore?
Is this a retail location?
Correct.
Okay. I'm curious, why don't you pick this backside? It looks like you'd limit your visibility. Of course, it's going to be good for a while, but you've got these other two lots in front of it that could be developed later on.
Sure, sure. The intent here is to have it follow kind of the traditional, I guess, shopping center model, where you have the anchor as tractor supply, and then we have the ancillary pad sites.
Okay. And will this be a second location or replacement?
I can't speak to that. Just as the current owner and as the seller, we do have a representative from Tractor Supply here that could possibly answer that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Second location.
Second location?
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome.
Yes.
Other questions for the applicant or staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the first request, which is to amend the future land use plan.
Chair, I'll move to approve the amendment to the future land use plan.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Class. All in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Motion opposed? Motion carries. The second thing to vote on is the change of zoning. Do I have a motion concerning that request?
Chair, I'll move to approve the zoning as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the zoning as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Class. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the last part of this D3 is to vote on the SUP request for the outdoor display. Do I have a motion on the SUP request?
Chair, I'll move to approve the SUP as presented.
I have a motion to approve the SUP as presented. Do I have a second? Or, motion by Mr. Hayes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Motion carries. We'll move on to discussion items, which is E. The first one on discussion items tonight is the monthly plat approval report from staff.
So, we had one that was approved administratively, the Aiken subdivision, one lot, which is 8R1, a replat, and it had a sidewalk variance that was approved by DRC not to install sidewalks along 377 or Old Granbury Road. The property is located at 2440 East Highway, US 377, and the purpose of this plat was to abandon sanitary control easements and the overhead electric easements. And FIA is not associated with this plat, and the plat was approved on November 13.
All right. Thank you, Cody. And the second thing on our discussion items tonight is our 2024 comprehensive plan update, workshop presentation and discussion.
All right, good evening, P&amp;Z members. Hard to believe this is our fourth workshop that we've had with the comprehensive plan. It's also our last scheduled workshop, that we'll be coming back to you again before the conclusion of the project with the entire plan draft, so that you can consider that, ask any other questions. And at that point, we would ask for your recommendation, but this tonight is an update on some of the components that we've been working on. That includes some transportation plan content. That includes the various other chapters that we're updating, that we'll go through quickly. We do want to spend some time, and I have Jason Clontz with Catalyst Commercial here with us tonight, going over the market study and the findings from that. That will form the basis of our economic development recommendations. And then finally, we want to cover growth strategies, growth management strategies. So, a lot of that will be new content. We'll go through it as quickly as we can. You're welcome certainly to ask any questions about any of that content as we go along. So, we're nearing the end. We're still in the drafting phase, but we've largely got most of the plan drafted at this point. Still to go are implementation, and then the final economic development components of the plan. But our next step after this would be adoption. So, we're looking at doing that sometime after the new year. At that point, we'll be coming up on a year since we began this project, so we're definitely in the home stretch. Our last open house was in October. We did get some feedback at that open house. We presented the updated future land use map. We presented some of our housing strategies, and we presented some transportation strategies at that open house. The feedback was almost universally positive and favorable towards what we presented. We did get some written feedback on those components, which we've incorporated into the revised draft of those planned chapters. But for the most part, it was just asking us to kind of consider some additional elements, such as school district capacity, kind of in the face of growth, tweaking some of the medium-density housing recommendations, so that we were kind of keeping those pretty tight, much closer to really the housing that you reviewed tonight, as opposed to large, high-density apartment complexes, making sure that that language was tightened up. So, a little bit of feedback on some adaptive reuse and on some of the more economic factors, talking about some of the companies that we want to attract to the city, the types of jobs that we want those companies to bring with them in support of housing growth in the city, and also so that folks aren't leaving Granbury to go get work elsewhere. So, with that in mind, we'll want to quickly go through just some of the chapters that are receiving minor updates through this plan. The first is the environment and natural resources chapter. Since that chapter was originally adopted eight years ago, there have been some changes in terms of city ordinances regarding tree production that we incorporated into that chapter, along with some strategies to continue encouraging tree protection, though it's no longer required, and also some language regarding low-water landscaping, native plantings. Think zero scape, but it doesn't have to be all the way over to zero scape. It can be more water conservation type of landscaping elements. We also updated that chapter to reflect the 2027 state water plan from TWDB, and incorporated that into some of the conservation factors surrounding Lake Granbury, and added language about using Lake Granbury as an aesthetic and recreational amenity that also align with other planned chapters. Historic preservation and downtown revitalization. We updated some of that information to acknowledge some of the ordinance updates that have been made since the chapter was adopted, namely parking regulations in the downtown area. We also updated the downtown parking inventory map within that chapter, and again, used that to align with some of our other recommendations within the transportation chapter. I know that's one thing that has come up multiple times, is finding a good place to park that's not right in the heart of downtown, because we don't want an overrun of cars, but is also close enough to be convenient and walkable. So, we tried to align our transportation recommendations with the parking inventory that we have currently, without trying to add too much to that because of the impact that that can have on the character of downtown. And also renewed strategies for revitalizing the downtown area, including some new information regarding potential funding sources that can be utilized to pursue those objectives. The parks chapter, this was a very light update. That's largely due to the limitations that are imposed on the city by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. If new strategies are introduced, then some public engagement needs to occur to kind of validate those strategies. Since the parks plan was updated less than five years ago, this is really just a refresh to acknowledge some of the recommendations of that plan that have been made. Some have been taken off the table, so we're acknowledging that. We're also including some language within that plan to extend parks and trail access to newly annexed areas along Lake Granbury, so that we're continuing the lake access and frontage within the trail network. So, that will be incorporated within the plan. There may be a map update suggested to that, and then a later update to the city's master parks and trails plan, which is outside the scope of the comprehensive plan, but will be a good way to incorporate that change and make it so that future development will participate with the city in parks construction and trail construction. For transportation, just building off of the recommendations that were presented at our last workshop, our last couple of workshops, the one where we kind of sat around the table and kind of drew out transportation links, and then our subsequent workshop and the open house. open house, we received a lot of feedback about folks being interested and being able to walk around town more comfortably, being able to bike around town more comfortably. So at the open house, we introduced, didn't really introduce because it's in the current plan, but built on this concept of complete streets, which takes an existing right-of-way section and says, well, how can we use it to make it convenient for all users of the right-of-way, not just cars, but also bicyclists, also pedestrians, and strategically allocate space within a right-of-way so that all users are able to use that space. Of course, we can all think of probably our favorite examples of streets that have really kind of been overrun with cars and function both as a street for moving traffic quickly and also for providing access to businesses along that street and really don't do a great job of either one. This is a image of Greenville in Dallas that utilized some complete streets principles to reimagine the street, open it up for pedestrians and bicyclists. Does the traffic move at ninety miles an hour anymore? No, but that's kind of more of a feature than a bug. And it's, if you go down there today, it's a much more interesting and vibrant place to be. So starting to think about the application of some of those concepts, again, they're in the current plan, so we're really just building off of those rather than introducing a new concept. So in looking for a case study within Granbury, we identified South Morgan Street. This is really between Bridge Street and three seventy seven, and it's really the heart of this kind of case study is north of fifty-one where that ties in and wise in with South Morgan. But you can see some of the concepts on the screen within an existing right-of-way, how some of those users can be allocated. This isn't prescriptive. This isn't meant to say, hey, go to text dot tomorrow and say this is what we want to do, but kind of just to get us more thinking about how we can utilize existing right-of-way and the space that we have today that currently is all taken up by cars, four lanes with the center left-turn lane continuous in the middle, and use it to cause revitalization within an area. There's businesses on both sides of that area and to connect and to tie into downtown since right where it ties into Bridge Street, you're basically in downtown if you go a few blocks east. So kind of continuing that character with downtown, managing the traffic a little bit more and opening it up for those other users. Kind of along those same lines, traffic calming devices. This was a subject that we understand was brought up at a recent P and Z meeting when considering a change to the master thoroughfare plan. So we wanted to add some information in here about the various traffic calming devices that are available. This may be used in conjunction with complete streets. It may be standalone. It's not something that you have to use in every situation. If it's in the plan, then what that really does is that sets you up for updating your technical specs as needed so that when the opportunity arises and a development comes in, and we want to make sure that we don't have high-speed traffic going through neighborhoods and that we don't have inappropriate, you know, situations and speeds and places where we've got a mixture of users, whether that's pedestrians or bicyclists, or it's near a school, that we've got some tools in the toolkit to be able to slow down that traffic or manage that traffic rather than, hey, this is a nice idea, but we don't have any technical specs to go along with it, so we don't have anything to review. So this is the first step towards implementing those. Again, it's not something that you would have to use in all situations, but it's something that's very difficult to implement without having it defined. I'm going backwards. I do that every time with this clicker. So our thoroughfare map, we're coming into alignment with, of course, the county is doing kind of a parallel project with their master thoroughfare plan. So this list is the same for the most part as what you saw at your last workshop a couple of months ago. We're still working with the county to get alignment on some of these roadways. We feel pretty good about that southern, southwestern loop that ties in. They're south of the lake and then up to three seventy seven to at least form a western extension to the loop. And then some of the, some of the other roads that go primarily through the county to the north and south, those are still kind of being worked out, still kind of being talked about, so we don't have any major changes to introduce with this. We're still having those conversations, but we are hopeful that when this comes to you for adoption, that there will be, there'll be good alignment between this and the county plan since a lot of these roadway connections will rely quite a bit on the county, and we want to cover that a little bit more when we get to the growth management section of the presentation. One thing to point out, actually, let me go back to the full map. One thing to pull, to point out is along that northern loop, that's where the change occurred. We've reviewed that with Kira. We've realigned that roadway that goes in between Lipan and the school so that it follows the approved development plan. There is some potential still for some parallel routes and some connectivity within that area. So we, we're not necessarily done revisiting that area, but there are some development impacts that are occurring there that may change this map. The primary thing that we want to do there is just make sure that we've got a redundant system so that when that development occurs, we're not sending all that traffic cutting through to get over to Lipan since that is a neighborhood and we'll have a park and we'll have a certain type of field that we want to maintain. So we're still evaluating that. We're still talking about that, how to have that, that parallel route there. It may, it may be that, and I'll advance to this slide now, it may be that that green collector that you see just south of that blue line in between Weatherford Highway and Lipan, that that shifts a little bit and that that kind of becomes that, that parallel route. And then from a development impact standpoint, we understand there's, there's some developments that are being approved or have been approved along the loop that may shift where you see some of those, those pink arrows. So when we come back, we'll, we'll highlight that along with any changes that were made based on the, on the county plan. But other than that, the future land use map is definitely rounding into form, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to collaborate with the county since that will require collaboration going forward to get that implemented. So I'll pause there. I'll invite Jason up to cover the economic development study. We brought Catalyst on to do both a market analysis and then a full report and economic development chapter that will fold in as a component of the comprehensive plan and will feed into the land use recommendations that we've been discussing. So Jason will go through some of those at this time.
Which ones? I don't want to go backwards again.
The big one is forward. Yeah. So just press the big one.
I just want to say special thanks to Freeze and their team for allowing us to partner with them on this initiative. Some of the most powerful communities have a very strong sort of economic development component in with their land use strategies, and we know that economic development is certainly important to you. So to get started, I think what is unique to us is, you know, part of our role is continuing the things and amplifying the things that also work. And so when we think about economic development, we also want to preserve the historic charm and the identity and making sure that our recommendations in downtown may be, you know, different than the three seventy seven corridor. So we want to make sure that everything that we do is sort of unique and contextual to the market. We're going to talk a little bit about growth management, but also, you know, how to balance and manage that growth, but also continue to encourage livability. So, you know, seeing, you know, product like, you know, tonight, you know, that makes sense to, you know, accommodate more of a variety of housing choices, we think is smart. But also, we want to make sure that, you know, economic development is also about fostering that sense of community and investing in things that can continue to bring quality alive. So it's sort of the intrinsic value of the planning process. And then ultimately, this is about growing the pie, so looking for ways to create prosperity and also continuing to reinforce Granbury as a destination. So those are some of the key things and principles where we started this process, making sure that some of our goals align with some of the land use strategies that the Freeze team also has been working on. So as part of our process, I think, you know, one of the things that you want to do from an economic development standpoint is obviously, you know, one, benchmark where we are and where we're going, but also look at, you know, how that compares to some of the other peer communities. So some of the example communities, you know, would be Weatherford, who also has a unique historic downtown. I think Weatherford had somewhat of a co-operation relationship in a way with Granbury. You definitely share some of your consumer revenue, but certainly there's some unique characteristics to Granbury being lake-oriented. And also other communities nearby like Cleburne and Stephenville, just to see, those are both peer communities, both somewhat unique in terms of their economic approach. But again, it sort of helps understand some of the nuances between some of these communities. Granbury being more exurban, some of the other communities other than Stephenville is much smaller in terms of punching power. It's much bigger, and we'll look at some of the economic factors sort of describing that. And as part of this process, we wanted to look at sort of array of demand, you know, as you think about the economic pie, it's obviously comprised of a ride, array of different product types. So one of the things that we looked at is office, and obviously, that could be an important component to help growing what we would consider primary jobs or white-collar jobs. And so looking at office demand, there is demand for about thirty thousand square feet of office per year. And again, if you sort of project that forward, thinking about planning, there is some demand for office. So as you're, you know, exploring different applications and having to make decisions at the dais, you know, we wouldn't expect large office unless it was more boutique or corporate-driven, you know, user product, but we do see that there is opportunity within this project to include some office from a land use strategy. Industrial is a little bit different. We do know in talking to economic development that you're almost out of at least your existing industrial land that's sort of ready for market. There's another large project, looks like it may come online, and that could, could backfill some existing office space. But again, in terms of industrial, there's a very limited amount of land, at least today, that I would consider market-ready. So, but we do know that you have a substantial amount of sort of appetite for more industrial. One of the things that we are going to look at is, from a location quotient standpoint, is making sure that we align that future product with the industry and occupations that make sense where you have the greatest concentration of clusters. But again, having accessibility with the US highway, having access to rail, and obviously the airport are all sort of strong factors that could support sort of more of those primary jobs from an industrial standpoint. And within that sector, what we did is we looked at where your concentration is in the marketplace. Obviously, retail is probably your dominant category that makes sense with, with the strength of the corridor. Again, strong growth, but the other emerging categories that we see where there's strong opportunity is healthcare and manufacturing. Again, and so that sort of collates with some of the data that we found and some of the product mix. Obviously, the retail trade, you know, you've got kind of a twofold market. One is sort of a regional serving market, but you also have tourism and destination because of the historic downtown and some of the other sort of regional serving uses. And then obviously, healthcare to support sort of your population base. And then manufacturing, you know, this would be more of a last mile opportunity, but obviously there's certainly manufacturing that makes sense for specialty products and things that can also serve the metroplex. One of the things that I think is very interesting in terms of retail is the size of your trade area. Most municipalities that we work with that are not exurban like this would probably have ten, twelve, fifteen-minute drive time. I'd mention the size of your market. Granbury has a primary trade area of about twenty-five minutes. Our methodology is very consistent with a lot of the retail brands that we work with, but we take essentially data from people that shop in Granbury. We sort of throw the five percent outliers away, and then the remaining ninety-five percent, we look at the closest sixty-five percent of the cluster. And so you can see those little red dots. Each one of those is a, is a customer that had been shopping in Granbury six or more times. And again, if you sort of add that all up just for geographic perspective, that, that serves basically a twenty-five-minute drive time. That doesn't mean that's your only trade area. That's your core trade area. Obviously, you're pulling from places like southwest, Southwest Fort Worth and Weatherford, and we know that those samples that we took showed that as well. But within your core trade area, we're seeing about eleven percent growth over the next five years and a very strong growth in household income, which basically increases your purchasing power, increases the capacity for more retail. And that obviously coincides with the retail potential. You can see the retail inventory by square footage continues to increase, but one of the also, the interesting things is, is that your retail sales per square foot is also increasing about self, seven percent per year. So not only are you increasing in terms of the inventory, but you're also increasing in capacity, which I think is very interesting for a market like this. So again, all these are sort of telltale signs that there's substantial capacity for retail as a dominant category in terms of economic development. And so if you put that into consideration, you can see the different peer communities along the top. And if you look at the retail sales per square foot line, which is the second from the bottom, you can see that Granbury has a substantial higher retail sales per square foot than some of the peer communities. That gives you a perspective of how regional you trade and the quality of the retail that you have and in terms, in terms of creating that pull factor. And then you can also see the retail sales per capita is substantially higher even though your total population is much lower. So again, just demonstrating strength in the marketplace from a retail standpoint. The other thing that we looked at is housing. We know housing is important. Historically, you've been basically averaging about a hundred and seven permits per year. Majority of that, the greatest proportion of shares, obviously, what we would consider single-family. You can see back in two thousand twenty-one, there was a sort of a spike of some multifamily property that was entitled. And then you can see obviously the last couple of years where we had interest rate increases and inflation, that housing markets pretty much will normalize or even slow down from what you've seen as historical patterns. We do know that that's recovering, so as we look forward, and David's going to talk a little bit about population projections, but one of the things that we did is we wanted to look at what is the housing velocity or propensity across different income ranges? And so the top chart or the, shows the single-family detached demand based on an annual factor across different price points. But we see that you have about a demand, even though you've been averaging about a hundred and seventy units, demand for about two hundred and eighty-six units a year for net new housing. And then again, we did the same thing for urban residential or multifamily or basically non-owner occupied product, and there's about a hundred and seventy-five units per year that you could absorb. That does include build-to-rent or accessory dwelling units or townhomes and other product mix. It doesn't have to be, you know, four or more units, but we do see that there's additional demand for non-owner occupied product as well. So in summary, some of the things that we're working with Shay and the economic development team is, again, continue to leverage those assets, you know, obviously, Lake Granbury and downtown is strong anchor, so, you know, finding ways to reinforce that with either tourism or increased retail, certainly increasing industrial development for more primary jobs to sort of continue to expand the wealth and the income and the ability to sort of mitigate talent leakage. One of the things that I think will be a focus of this plan is looking for opportunities to accommodate some of that infill office, although not your strongest opportunity, want to mitigate some of the, sort of that white-collar job and mitigate some of the travel to Dallas, Fort Worth, and the other, the employment centers. And then part of this initiative will be aligning some of our residential demand with the future land use plan, again, to encourage some of the balanced housing and make sure that we have housing for talent. And then again, strengthening retail to support tourism and then really providing infrastructure to accommodate all this new development. So these are some of the key factors that we'll be working on with the economic team to help underscore the land use strategy with economic development strategy. And in summary, one of the things that we did is we looked at program justification just across all these categories, you know, one is industrial makes sense, what the, what is the opportunity in some of the specific recommendations from an industrial standpoint, again, looking at scalable, flexible uses, low-impact manufacturing, knowing that, you know, there's a limited amount of infrastructure. When we think about office, you know, creating maybe mixed-use development, could be horizontal mixed-use, but integrating office in there so that you, I coined the term workability so that you sort of have this environment where you, you can work but also have access to other amenities. And then again, looking at residential kind of accommodating needs for a wide range of housing opportunities based on the affordability range. And then retail, again, continue to focus on what's working, the community as a destination, but also reinforcing some of your key corridors. And I'd also say using this opportunity, knowing that there's so much demand for retail, is looking at opportunities for revitalization and maybe reinventing some of the aging retail just to continue to make sure that it stays contemporary and competitive, knowing that that's such a huge factor within your market. And I'm going to turn it back over to David to talk about growth management. And I'm going to turn it back over to David to talk about growth management strategies as well.
One of the things about bringing Jason on board that kind of keeps me on my toes is that not only is he very smart and very experienced and knows this market like the back of his hand, we had already developed a lot of the future land use scenarios before bringing Jason on board. So in a lot of ways, he was coming in to prove up those scenarios. And because his analysis is dispassionate, it might have shown, hey, we got it way wrong in terms of our commercial allocation or office allocation or residential, but we found that it tended to do the opposite. It validated kind of the way we had assigned those categories, the way we had distributed them across the city. So that was very, very comforting to know that we had kind of gotten that part right and that we can rely on that to kind of look at the city's growth trajectories going forward, that that aligns with the recommendations that we've been working on, particularly in terms of things like emphasizing the core of downtown and the core of the lake and revitalizing corridors and growing corridors along 377. So what we'd like to do when we have that land use map solidified, and, you know, not to say that it couldn't change, either based on your feedback or based on community feedback at this point, but we are able to take stock and kind of look at, okay, what do our future growth scenarios and possibilities look like? So the table on the screen looks at each of the land use categories that allow for residential and looks at them from a low density and high density scenario. So the high density is really the limit, the cap that we put on each of those categories within the plan. The low scenario is really, this is about the lowest possible density we could envision a category developing. So you can see three dwelling units per acre for low density. Based on the market, that's probably not likely to happen. If we take six as the highest scenario, then we may see something that falls in between, likely between five and six. And then same with all of your other scenarios, medium density, you know, six is pretty low even for detached, single family now. It's certainly low for things like townhomes. So if 10 is the high end, we're probably looking at eight or nine. So we take each of those low and high scenarios and based on your occupancy rate, based on your average persons per household from American Community Survey data, we're able to get a sense of what the population is, the ultimate population is of each of those districts, based on how they're allocated within the land use map. So you can see the total acres, vacant acres, based on the undeveloped land within each of those districts. Adjusted means that we're trying to factor things like right of way when those get developed. And from there, we're able to kind of map out how the city is going to grow into the future. So a couple of these charts show, beginning with our base year, which is actually 2022, because that's the most recent year that we have data from the census from the American Community Survey. We're able to take that starting point and say, okay, if we stay on the growth trajectory that we're on currently, that's the bottom line. How soon do we approach that either low scenario, if everything is built to the lowest density, or the high scenario, if everything is built at the highest possible density? So that gives us a range between 30,000 to about 50,000, 47,000. So based on each of those growth curves, we're able to see when we get to build out essentially. And the more interesting kind of scenario is when you factor in, okay, right now, we're developing a lot of relatively easy to develop land. So we like to say that, you know, the good stuff goes first. So assuming that good times continue and that the easy stuff continues to get developed at a fairly high rate, taking into account the analysis done by Catalyst, you know, if we figure that that equates to about 800 people per year, new residents, meaning not folks moving within Granbury and then net of people who are moving out of Granbury, we're going to continue at that fairly high trajectory for the foreseeable future, which is probably somewhere between 6 and 8%. Those are kind of our medium and high scenarios. But you'll see on these where the logistics curve shows that we start to run out of that easy to develop land and that growth curve gets quite a bit more shallow as we get close to that high build out. So that probably puts our build out based on our current future land use map somewhere around the 2060s is the most realistic scenario. And again, it all depends on how the final future land use map looks. But at this point, that's when we're expecting Granbury to approach build out. Right now, the NCT COGS planning horizon is 2050, so that's kind of what we say is the foreseeable future. It was 2045, but now they're preparing with a 2050 horizon. So we're still a little past that horizon, but within the range where we're starting to think in 20 or 30 years about, okay, we're really getting into an infill redevelopment type scenario at this point. And we've really got to potentially rethink some of our housing assumptions and really look at it in terms of redeveloping. We might be starting to get to that point, particularly with commercial, since we've achieved a lot of commercial build out currently and the good stuff is gone in a lot of ways along 377. With residential, there's still a little bit of space, some breathing room to continue building detached, single family without relying completely on infill and redevelopment. But from a growth management standpoint, we still want to, you know, look at what our housing mix is and we still want to look at the impact that that has on community character. Of course, some things are out of the city's hands. The new legislative session begins in the spring. Bills are already starting to be filed, believe it or not, even though Tuesday was the first day that bills could be filed in the 89th legislature, there's already been 1,700 bills filed in less than a week. Many of those are focusing on local control of growth and zoning and housing. Of course, annexation has been restricted for years now. ETJ restrictions have been gaining more and more traction. It's possible at this time next year, there will not be an ETJ anymore. And it remains to be seen what will fill that void, if counties will have more regulatory and land use authority or if it'll simply be completely left up to the market. But what that means for Granbury and particularly the way that your city limits profile is drawn out along with key corridors is that, you know, more projects will rely on inter-agency cooperation in order to get done. So that could mean county, that could mean, of course, TechDOT, which we're already used to working with, and school district. So all of those come together when we're considering kind of the reality of the growth management situation that we're in. That means focusing a lot on your CIP, using that as a tool to prepare for developments, to align your master plans and your CIP with areas that will grow in the future so that you're well positioned when developers do come in and when growth does happen to partner with developers or with the county or with TechDOT, as the case may be, to make sure that those plans are implemented. So that alignment of those resources is extremely important and updating regularly those master plans to ensure that they're current and that they align with the growth projections of the comprehensive plan. Water is obviously a big focus of communities all over Texas, since we're in kind of a perpetual flood and drought cycle. So looking at water, whether it's in pipe or whether it's in the creek, is kind of one resource that every drop counts. So in terms of things like water resource conservation, in terms of fixing leaky pipes, in terms of mitigating irrigation losses, looking at the city's design specs and looking at technical manuals to ensure that water is kind of looked at from one cycle, rather than here it's in its natural state, here it's being treated, here it's being used and returned to the system, that all of those are aligned in your technical planning. Housing is obviously something that we've looked at throughout the course of this plan. Not just the, you know, alignment of housing with, you know, well, what do we want to see? Do we want to see detached, do we see attached? But ensuring that once that housing gets built, that we're not, you know, walking away from it and just kind of leaving those property owners to kind of manage it themselves, that housing is seen as a community good, that housing is seen as part of your infrastructure and that the appropriate housing mix is being looked at as the city's growth continues. That character can be eroded if new housing units are incompatible with existing neighborhoods, with the existing form. If your mix is off, then that could be a misalignment, you know, with your employment base. So part of what we're looking at, you know, with the market analysis is what is your job mix? Not just building more housing and hoping that folks come and they occupy that housing at a certain price point, but developing the jobs and the industries, as Jason was talking about, so that you have folks to live in those homes, so that they're not open to just being purchased by investors and used as rentals, but that we can have folks living in there who are building equity is part of maintaining future growth. A big emphasis of this plan is ensuring that multifamily housing, that higher density housing, while an important component of that supply is only developed in areas that are contiguous with those similar housing types, so that there's not an erosion, again, of community character through inappropriate mixture of housing. So the future land use map has been designed to ensure that each of those things are congruous with the other. Already mentioned bringing the higher wage jobs as an area of focus, maintaining affordable housing supply by looking at things incrementally, maintaining your current incentives that are geared towards infill developments and making sure that those are well calibrated so that we're preserving the older areas of town or preserving the historic areas of town while still responding to the demand for housing in those areas. You know, whether that's encouraging mother-in-law suites or looking at ways to allow mild density increases, whether that's multiple units on a lot or expanding the ADU tools that you have. Some of those might be expanded for you in the next legislative session. We'll have to see how that shakes out, but the city can kind of proactively continue to look at that in order to ensure that the affordable housing supply is maintained. So coming back to the future land use map, again, we see a lot of good alignment with the work that Jason and his team have done. There may be an opportunity to add a little bit more commercial based on that market analysis to some of your key corridors, particularly the loop. So this map may shift a little bit before it gets into the final plan. In turn, that might mean some of those build out numbers shift a little bit, but I don't think there's going to be a significant difference between what's been presented tonight and what gets into the final plan. But key thing to leave with, part of the main mission critical things in this plan is giving the city additional tools when considering rezoning requests. What we heard at the onset of the plan is that developers are coming to you with proposals for multifamily housing, for high density housing, and that there's not adequate tools within, you know, your current plans and ordinances to kind of understand what impacts those would have and how those should be evaluated. So we've introduced the dashboard concept with this plan. That was also explained at the last open house, which the mayor attended. I personally got to explain that to him myself and got some very positive feedback on the efficacy of those, of the dashboards. But really, that combines a whole lot of different tools to put at your disposal when you're evaluating zoning changes. So the specific zoning district that's being requested, you're able to evaluate how that matches up with the land use district that that zoning change is taking place in. The uses, so if a developer comes to you and says, hey, I want to develop this for neighborhood commercial or I want to develop this for medium density housing, then you're able to look at that appropriate scale and say, okay, this is appropriate. This is not appropriate, or this is somewhat appropriate, but there's certain considerations that we need to make. So this is going to be an important tool for the commission to rely on, for city council to rely on when looking at zoning changes. You just had an action item earlier to update the future land use map. That's great, that's one of our recommendations is to continue doing that. Whenever somebody proposes a zoning district that does not align with the comprehensive plan, there should be a separate process to look at and evaluate just changing the comprehensive plan so that you get kind of a detached look from the specifics of that presentation of that zoning change and you're evaluating just, okay, in a vacuum, does it make sense to change from this color to this color or from this use to this use? And then on the back end, regularly reevaluating and auditing and looking at changes that were made to the future land use map, zoning changes that have been made within the last six months or the last 12 months and seeing, okay, how did those work out? Did we see the intended consequences? Are there other things that need to be considered when evaluating future zoning changes and development compatibility? So just to wrap up, we're in the last third of this project. So the new year will see us switching full throttle into working towards adoption. We do still have the final draft to compile that we're working on, along with some implementation measures. We hope to have that ready next month and start to get that in your hands. But we're definitely in the home stretch here, so this kind of being our last scheduled workshop. Want to pause, see if you had any feedback or any questions? But definitely a big thank you to you all for serving as the steering committee for this project.
Any questions or comments, commission members? Make rock it.
All right, either tired or we knocked it out of the park. I'll take either one.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Code any, I don't see anything else on the agenda. I just want to remind commission members, we're a week late this week. I mean, this month and next month is coming up quick, it's December the ninth, so just realize that's going to come kind of early in the month after having this one come late. But there are no other business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.